I would like to call the Tuesday, December 6th, 2022 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Ms. Barado, would you please take the role?
Sunday, Mumgaard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Cluke, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers? We've got one presentation tonight. Gene, you want to come up? Come on up. See if you can make it. So, like he said, last meeting. So, we've got a couple of things. One of them is what he's holding, the Iron Butterfly. And the people that aren't familiar with it, these were made for a project. And then the developer that had them made, I don't know, patented or service marked, somehow they protected it so they can't be made again. At least, we have them protected. And then the foundry only made so many of them, so there are a limited number of them. And so, we don't give them out lightly. And so, we just have one for you. Gene just says, "Presented December 6th for 20 years of dedicated and faithful service to the citizens and staff of the city of Papillion." So, I wanted to give you that.
Oh, thank you. Is this that hypothetically email I got?
Hypothetical.
Yeah.
So, then we've got another one that, if you don't want to set that down, you can hang this up. Says about the same thing, but it's just engraved in wood. "The city of Papillion, 20 years of continuous service to the citizens of Papillion as a city council member presented today." And then, want to give them an official proclamation? I'd like to read that. "In appreciation of Gene Jaworski's 20 years of outstanding service to the city of Papillion, whereas Gene Jaworski began his appointment with the city of Papillion in 2002 and has served 20 years for the city of Papillion. Whereas through his 20 years of service, Gene has consistently followed a team approach, working with others and taking the time to listen, even when he might disagree. He has always had a goal of making the city a better place. Whereas Gene had a passion for golf, and that has served the city well. With his appointment to the Golf Ad Hoc Committee, he's given valuable leadership from his experiences. It has helped make Terra and Eagle the best municipal courses in the region. Whereas over the years, Gene has helped many large projects in Papillion come to fruition. One of these projects was the Papillion Landing Community Center, ball fields and field house, something he was deeply passionate about. Whereas Gene has served the citizens of Papillion and helped to maintain a safe and vibrant community with a thriving economy, making Papillion a great place to live, work and play with a small-town feel. Whereas Gene has shown great passion, dedication and commitment in representing the city of Papillion in Ward 1, and has been highly valued and greatly appreciated by our city government and community. Now therefore, I, David P. Black, Mayor of the city of Papillion, do hereby present this proclamation to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Gene Jaworski for 20 years of dedicated service to the city of Papillion. We thank Gene for his years of service and wish him the very best in future endeavors." Then I just want to say, just real quick, Gene, you're passionate about your ideas and you know what you believe, and you willingly share that. But as that was mentioned, you've got a team approach. And I think you've caused a lot of good debate where something might have slipped through easy. You stopped easy conversation, and we ended up with better policy because of that. And if I go back about 12, 13 years, first time I really encountered that was on golf. You saw some things over there that nobody else saw. And you woke us up to some things, and that golf course is strong now because of, personally because of you. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Want to say yours?
I was afraid this was going to happen. I'm getting a little emotional, but... My wife, Mary Anne, my daughter Lauren, my son-in-law Brandon, and my little buddy, granddaughter Parker. Hi, buddy. First, the big thing I want to do is catch my breath for one. I want to thank the residents of Ward 1 for electing me five times. That was a great honor, and I had, I was very proud to be on this city council. What we've done over the last 20 years is truly amazing. And I don't want to bring out the things we did because I don't want to forget nothing, but this city has grown, but what's important is we're still Papillion. Still a small town feels like home. With that, I'll get through this. That's why I didn't want to do this. But what makes Papillion special is our policies. You know, and I know I've talked to Mark numerous times. It's not what the building looks like when you build it. It's what it looks like 20 years from now. And we have a couple of examples. Market Point, it's almost 20 years old. Shadow Lake, it's almost 20 years old, and they're looking good still. So, with that, I want us, hopefully, we keep Papillion Papillion. And when I say that is when we drive around the city and we look at the houses and we see the 10-foot offsets. What Bob Dreeson did years ago was absolutely awesome. I hope we don't give that up. Because we've been giving it up for the townhomes, but please don't give it up for houses. That's what makes us special, and we're always going to be special if we keep those ideas. So, again, it was fun being here for the 20 years. I think our staff is the greatest staff around from top to bottom. We've got great employees in the council. We may not always agreed on things, but we always were professional enough to respect each other. Keep doing that, too, because that's important. And no comments from the peanut gallery.
I'm already in the queue.
Shut it off, Phil.
Appreciate it.
That's it. Thanks, everybody.
You're still official, Bob. Councilman Stube.
Yeah, thank you. So, Gino and I have, we used to work together at M U D. And I was trying to think today how many years I've known him, and he's going to get me emotional because I've known him for close to 40, 40 years. I think it was early to mid 80s when I first came across Gino. And he's been a good worker. He was a hard worker, dedicated worker. He was, he was in charge. A lot of his career was related to what we call at M U D, water repair. So, it was dealing with emergencies. And one of the things that, when he made decisions, or he put together a crew, or he had to look at completing a project, one of the things that he always considered was the customers of M U D. What's the best for the customers of M U D? And I think that that type of mindset has carried forward into his role as a councilman for 20 years in Papillion. That kind of mindset has contributed to the strong, vibrant community that Papillion is today. And I think the citizens should be thankful for his contributions. I think he should be proud of the 20 years that he has given to the community. There's people out there that probably wouldn't do that. You know, he and I first ran together, and obviously, his ability, so his, one of the names, if you look at his license plate, is Jaws. And it's not because of his favorite movie or likes to eat. It's because he, he has the ability to communicate, and he has a kind of a quip every once in a while for people. And so, when he was out walking door-to-door, he most likely did that with some of the people that he was communicating with. And so, it translated him to getting elected for the first time. Maybe that's why he got Jaws, so. But yeah, I just think, to reiterate, I think he's been a valuable asset to the community, and he should be proud of what he's contributed to the community. And I think the citizens in Ward 1 should be thankful for him representing, but also the citizen of Papillion as a whole. Because I think that's what he looks for as Papillion as a whole. And I want to thank him for his many years of service.
Mr. Mumgaard.
Well, since I was one of those people, the people here who were on the council before Gene got elected, I start by thinking about Gene first getting onto the council. At that time, I know it's hard to believe, but there were some council members who didn't like each other, and we didn't always get along. And so, I wondered at the time, okay, how's this guy going to fit in? What side of the argument is he going to be on? I quickly learned that Gene Jaworski was on the side of the argument for what's best for the city of Papillion. Throughout the 20 years he's been there, I can't think of a single time that he has made a decision that he didn't honestly think was just best for the city of Papillion and the citizens of Papillion. I quickly learned that Gene was somebody that, no, you, you didn't have to worry about a fight. You didn't have to worry about underhandedness. He was as straightforward and straight shooter as you could ever come across. And that was a distinct pleasure. And I can just, you know, when the proclamation talks about how he saw this as a team and how he listened, those things are entirely true. Throughout the 20 years, that's been Gene Jaworski. And so, I can think that, I'll just simply say that, echo that the people of Papillion and the people of Ward 1 have been well-served and blessed by the service of Gene Jaworski. And I thank you, Gene, for the many times you've told me I was wrong. Sometimes I learned you were right. And I cannot think of any better honor than to say that, sometimes I learned you were right. So, thank you very much, Gene Jaworski.
Mr. Ringberg.
Well, I must say, the last few days especially, I've thought about Gene quite a little bit, believe it or not. And I try to think of a word that would speak to his time on the council. And the first thing I thought of is, what I'm going to stay with, is lucky. And I say that because we're really lucky that you've been here for 20 years. When I look back, as Councilman Mumgaard said about some of the councils we've served with, you were such an improvement. It just tickled me to death to have you here. And the thing that I like about Gene is he always was straightforward. You never had to doubt where he was coming from. You didn't have to wonder if there's some motive for what he's saying. He was always out front, and he was honest. And that's pretty hard to find in people nowadays, somebody that's straightforward and honest. And you're one of those people, Gene. I'm repeating what the mayor said a little bit, but I was trying to think also of certain times that stick out. Well, it's the Golf Ad Hoc Committee, believe it or not. Gene and I were both on that together, and we were, this is several years ago. Both of our courses weren't doing that well, management-wise and financially and so forth. And I learned early on, in serving on that committee, that Gene was the go-to person for it. He knew what he was talking about when it came to golf and providing service and customer service. And Gene was instrumental in getting both of our golf courses back on track and back being a solid recreational experience for people. And so, I'll always thank him for that in particular because it wouldn't have ever gotten done without him. So, anyway, I'm going to miss you not being here. But, but, but I also, I also did make a point tonight before the meeting. I got, he granted me permission to call him for advice if I need it. And you're a grinder, but in a good way. And the city's a better place because you were here. Thank you.
Mr. Glover.
So... So, I just want to say that my relationship with Gene has been both personal and professional. We have a tendency to talk a lot, and I'm in Ward 1 also. So, he's been my mentor as far as the things in Ward 1 that we want to get accomplished. And I think I've, I've been on the council 14, 15 years, somewhere in that area. And so, Gene has truly shown me what, what's important. And, and not only is it to take care of your ward, but it's also to take care of the city and to move the city forward. Even if you're maybe not fully in agreement with things, but the majority of our council thinks that it's a good idea, then, then we usually talk it over and discuss it. And, and we move forward with, with our votes. And it's been really positive, good, good input from Gene. And I, and I think the thing that I'll miss about Gene most is, as he said, he's my Uber driver home. About four years ago, I had a stroke, so I don't drive at night. And so, I've been trying to talk him into signing up for Uber, but I can't get him to pull the trigger on that. Yeah, and he just told me that tonight, if you need a ride home, don't call me if it's cold out. So, I'll have to, I'll have to rely on Mr. Mumgaard, I guess, to do that. But, but you will be missed, Gene. You know, and I think about this council and how well we get along. And, and you know, we talk, you guys that have, that are been here 20 years, you've talked about, you know, the past council. And I, I never experienced that. In, in the, all the years that I've been here, when, 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 we don't always agree on things, but when we walk out of here, it's done, it's over, the vote's been made, and we go on with life and don't hold it against each other. And Gene taught, taught me that. So, thank you, Gene. You'll certainly be missed, and I do have your phone number, so.
Mr. Gaines.
So, I think one of the most important attributes of anybody who's an elected official is passion. And that's one of the things that, whether you and I agree on an issue, I always knew that you were fighting for your constituents and fighting for Papillion. The second thing is, is that I understand the sacrifice that it takes at times to represent, you know, your ward in the city and the sacrifices that you have to make. And I appreciate you doing that for the city of Papillion for 20 years. So, thank you much, Gene.
Ms. Cluke.
Thank you. I want to agree with Councilman Mumgaard and Councilman Ingberg. I've only been here a little bit longer than you were, but it was brutal for a few years. And your just strong voice and blatant honesty and not being the person who had to sugarcoat anything. You came in and you said, "This is what I believe," and we moved there. And it was another spark that got us to the point where, as Councilman Glover said, we can disagree, but we can still be amicable and friends about it. And I cannot tell you how many times, having the privilege to sit next to Gene, that we are sitting here and he's like, "I'm just going to say it. I'm just going to speak my mind." He gets the microphone, he says what he wants to say, and sometimes he's loud, and sometimes he's a little softer. And then he puts it back, and he'll look over at me and he'll casually say, "It's just what I believe." And I'm like, you know, many times, that's exactly what we need to hear, is what do we just believe, and what do we believe our constituents want? So, not only did I get the privilege of hearing that, but I've also had the privilege of Gene taking care of me and always making sure there's been a pen here for me to sign because I never show up with a pen in my pocket. And he always does, so he takes good care of me. And we've had a great many conversations about our grandkids and the fun that we've had, or up in Minnesota, or our events out in Colorado. And while we don't do a lot outside of here, it's been an amazing friendship. Just the quick conversations, the true honesty, whether we agreed or disagreed, being able to be real, being able to be honest. And it's just been a real pleasure and amazing. Thank you for being the man you are.
Mr. Sunday.
Thank you, Mayor. Gene, I've always appreciated all the things everybody's already said about you, that you're a straight shooter, that you say what you believe, that you care deeply about the city of Papillion. I agree with all of those things. I've always appreciated your sort of folksy manner and delivery. And nobody mentioned that yet, but I've always appreciated that. You are a straight shooter, but you're not a straight shooter on the golf course. I'll say that right now. And nobody's brought up Gene's sense of humor yet either, which I always appreciated. And I'm going to share a little story from about a month ago. It was in the middle of the campaign, and Gene sees me out in public, and he calls me over to his table, and he says, "Hey, Steve, I've seen your pictures out there on the campaign signs. Can I have one of those?" He said, "My front yard's not scary enough yet for Halloween." That's all. Anyway, you'll be missed a lot here, Gene. And it's my privilege to have served on the council with you. Thanks.
You can do a rebuttal.
I just want to say thanks to everybody. Those are kind words. But the thing you got to remember is the guy taking my place, David Fanslaw, after about, I'd say, maybe three, four hours, you're going to forget who I was. He's going to, he's going to be just as good, if not better. So, and I think he's going to be a great addition to this council. And, well, he's going to, you're going to have to go 20 years, though.
But does he carry a pen?
Yeah, you got to have a pen. And you might, and you might have to give Glover a ride home. With that, thanks, everybody. I appreciate it.
Ms. Ringberg.
I was just going to mention one thing. I forgot that everybody around this table will always think of you when they hear one word. Apartments.
Ms. Powers, Administrator's report, please.
Thank you. And, and I will also say, they will also think of Gene with the word golf. So, but I do want to take just a minute, Gene, to, to thank you for your service on behalf of the, of the city staff. You are always quick to remind me to think about all the employees, not just the executives or department heads, but the, the blue-collar workers and think about them and, and all the decisions that we do. And on behalf of them and all of us, thank you very much. It's been great getting to know you over the past five years, and you will be missed. And your Parker, just so you know, she stole the show. When you, when you were up giving your speech, watch, watch it back. She's really cute. She, she'll take all the attention off you when, when people watch the meeting back, so. But thank you, Gene. And anytime you want to trade Parkers, we can do that, so. But I'll jump into my Administrator's report now. A big thank you to the Papillion Community Foundation and all of the, the city staff, the countless city staff, and the super-nice weather that made Winter Wonderland such a success this year. Estimates are anywhere from 10,000 to 12,000 people came out to enjoy the festivities. And with so many people, there were naturally a few issues. But we're going to work through those and make sure we, we get them all straightened out for next year. And again, thank you to Joe Hunter, the city staff and the city council for supporting such a great community event each year. And then, thank you to Tony Gowen and his maintenance employees for getting the new doors installed in the back of City Hall. Besides looking beautiful and adding kind of a historic feel, they do serve a function, so hopefully, it won't be so noisy when, when there's gatherings out back, back behind there. And then, the wall podium on the outside, you'll notice in the next couple of weeks will be removed, and we'll have a portable podium. So, you'll see some of those changes. And again, thank you to the same maintenance staff for adding all the beautiful holiday greenery that you see around here. It's my favorite time of the year. They always make it look so nice. And then, to cap off, a great year for the City Hall building. It also received its Nebraska historical marker this week. And you may have noticed it when you came in. It's on the west side, and it faces Washington Street. So, we're really proud of that. Again, a great year for this building, between the renovation and all the, the great things happening. And then, the ninth honor wall at Veterans Park was installed on November 21st. So, if you know any Sarpy County veterans that don't have the names on there yet, it's a great Christmas gift for anybody, but for anything in, in general. Just go to the Papillion Community Foundation. They'll get you hooked up on that. And then, a reminder to check out the city's recreation and library websites. There's several Santa sightings coming up and events at those two locations for the remainder of the month of December. So, if you have anybody that needs to see Santa and see what lists they're on on your nice, make sure you check out those websites. And then, finally, for those of you on the Public Safety Committee, there will be a committee meeting on December 20th at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Jaworski? Is there a second? Second by Ms. Cluke. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
8 yeas, 0 nays.
Motion passes. Next is Item F-1, Ordinance 1978, An Ordinance to Amend the Fiscal Year 2022-2023 Budget. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1978? Mr. Jaworski? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Glover, or any discussion? Please vote.
8 yeas, 0 nays.
Motion passes. F-2, Resolution R. 220205, Resolution to Accept a Dedication of Street Right-of-Way for One Tract of South 153rd Street Right-of-Way, South of Shram Road. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 220205? Mr. Jaworski? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
8 yeas, 0 nays.
Motion passes. So, we only do this once a year, but with the elections, we have a changeover of the council. And so, we've got a tradition. We're going to take a break for a little while. We've got coffee and cake downstairs at the second-floor conference room. And so, we'll take a break. We'll go down there for a while. And then, at 7:45, we'll adjourn, we'll come back up here and start the new meeting. And Mr. Jaworski and your family, if you want to stay down there, you can stay down there all night. So, we're going to take a break for just a little bit, and...
Mayor, one more thing I want, I'd like to say is, I didn't kind of hit on you, is you're a great mayor. You do so much for the city that I hope this isn't the last time you get sworn in. I hope you do it at least one or two more times. Because this city, I don't know if I'm saying this right, but the city doesn't know how lucky they are to have you. I do, because I see what you do. So, just think about that, that you got at least two more terms. Thanks.
Thank you. So, is there a motion to take a recess until 7:45? Most by Councilman Cluke? Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
8 yeas, 0 nays.
We are adjourned to the second floor. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Ms. Powers, Acting Deputy City Clerk. Would you read the official election results?
The official election results, as certified by the Sarpy County Election Commissioner, are as follows. Mayor, David P. Black, 8,167. Scatterings, 145. City Council Ward 1, Michael Tiedemann, 922. David K. Fanslaw, 1,0339. Scatterings, 23. City Council Ward 2, Steve Ingberg, 877. Lorene Renante, 817. Scatterings, 16. City Council Ward 3, Becky Hoke, 796. Steve Sunday, 1,00105. Scatterings, 9. City Council Ward 4, Tom Mumgaard, 1,0303. Autumn Skyburns, 962. Scatterings, 20. Those persons elected have met all requirements as set forth in State Statute Section 32-602.
Can you explain to people what scatterings is?
Yes, it's right ends less than 5%.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Barado, would you please take the role? Oh, Mr. Fanslow, come on up. Take your seat, and your nameplate's already there. Welcome. Welcome. Would you please take the roll?
Sunday. Roll call.[611.54][611.54](Laughter) Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Fanslaw, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
We have a privilege of having the Honorable David Artaburn as a judge here to swear in the, those that were elected. People aren't aware, Judge Artaburn has been in Papillion quite a while. He's been a judge for 26 years, currently on the Court of Appeals for about the last five years. Before that, he was a judge of the District Court for Sarpy, Cass, and Odo Counties, and that was about 12 years. And then he was in the Sarpy County Adult Drug Court for about nine years. And then prior to the judge's service, he was in the Nebraska Department of Justice as an Assistant Attorney General for 13 years. He was in the United States Attorney's Office as a Special Assistant to the United States Attorney for about 10 years. And before that, a little bit with Health and Human Services at the, the US level and private practice. And then spent a little time in the government world, started out in, as a deputy county attorney. So, it's a real honor to have Judge Artaburn here to issue the oath. And he'll do the mayor's oath, and then he'll do council oath. Judge Artaburn.
Well, Sam, not quite as experienced, but some of that was at the same time.[695.23][695.23](Laughter). So, 18 years on the bench.
18, all right.
All right. Please raise your right hand. I, David Black...
I, David Black.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska...
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation...
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion...
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of the office of mayor...
And I will faithfully and impartially perform the offices, the duties of the office of mayor...
According to law...
According to law.
And to the best of my ability...
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear...
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate...
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of any political party or organization...
Nor am I a member of any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow...
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States...
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state by force or violence.
Or of this state by force or violence.
And that during such time as I am in this position...
And dur, and during such time as I am in this position...
I will not advocate...
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of...
Nor become a member of...
Any political party or organization...
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow...
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States...
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state...
Or of this state.
By force or violence...
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.[803.13][803.13](Applause).
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Steve Sunday.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska...
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same...
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation...
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion...
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of City Councilman...
Perform the duties of City Councilman.
According to law...
According to law.
And to the best of my ability...
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear...
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate...
That I do not advocate.
Nor am I a member of...
Nor am I a member of.
Any political party or organization...
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow...
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States...
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state by force or violence...
Or of this state by force or violence.
And that during such time...
And that during such time.
As I am in this position...
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate nor become a member of...
I will not advocate nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization...
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow...
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States or of this state...
Of the government of the United States or of this state.
By force or violence...
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you.[952.01][952.01](Applause). I think there's some potential.
Thank you, thank you again, Judge, for coming out in the evening and doing the oath for us.
Happy to do so.
And if every, anybody's ever curious about that oath, that it's longer than the president, it is in state statute, so we cannot change it, so. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Fanslow.
Motion.
Motion, second by Ms. Klug. Do we have any proponents or opponents?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can I pull J4? I have a question about that.
Hold on. J, J4 is polled.
Okay.
Please vote on everything except J4. Mr. Glover? Need your vote. Okay. Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
This is Item J4, Resolution R 220212, A Resolution to Approve a Professional Services Agreement Between the City of Papillion and Felsburg-Holt and Olvig for the Citywide Opticon Design. The resolution, that, I think it's good enough. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R 220212? Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sunday. Do, any proponents or opponents? Mr. Ingberg.
The question I have, and I don't know, since the Public Works Director's absent due to illness tonight, and if we could answer this, but it's my understanding that originally we were going to, with these, with these signals for police and fire, was going to go to a GPS-type system, but it didn't meet the warrants to do so. And so I, so I guess my question is, is there, is there any way to measure how long it will be before we could possibly reach the warrants to do the GPS version? Number first, number one question. Number two is, I assume the GPS system, at least to my knowledge, is a better system than the one we currently have. So does that mean we should perhaps hold off doing a total upgrade and instead spend that money for the GPS-type system in the future? And maybe you could answer that, Alex.
Welcome.
Hello, Alex Evans, City Engineer. So in this study, they'll look at that. I, I, what they've proposed to look at is replacing some of the detectors, which would upgrade them to the current technology and make them more efficient for what infrastructure we have in place. They did mention that the GPS would be a complete overhaul, and I think that's what would be evaluated as well as, as in this study. So this would be a study for the detectors, and I don't have a copy of the, it's in the packet, of some of the scope items that they'll be looking into as well. So there'll be the detectors at a minimum and looking at improving some of, I think there's a certain amount of intersections that don't have those detectors that they'd be looking at. But as part of that study, yes, they'll, they'll look at and overall what that would take. But I think economically, this might be the best option for the time being.
Okay. And that's why, my question, because as I read through it, it appeared that we could improve it to the GPS type, but we don't meet the traffic warrants to do that at this time, so we were gonna just upgrade what we have. And my question was, is that we throw our good money after badge, we wait until we go to the GPS version rather than fix what we have and maybe prove it, improvement incrementally? Or should we just wait for the GPS warrants to be fulfilled?
Yeah, and that's a good question, and the engineers that are from FHU doing this study will recommend that before we...
Okay.
Put the money into it.
Okay.
So we will have an understanding of, okay, is it worth the investment now, based on this?
Okay.
Have to upgrade this, and how does that compare...
Okay.
To the GPS overall.
I just wanted to make sure we kept GPS in the picture and we weren't making a final decision.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is K1, Ordinance 1983, An Ordinance to Approve a Change of Zone from MU Mixed Use to CC Community Commercial for the property legally described as Lot 5 Generations, generally located on the northwest corner, South 120th Street and Highway 370. The applicant's BHI Properties, Lot 5 Generations. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Stube. M1, Resolution R 220206, A Resolution to Elect a New City Council President for a Term of One Year. Again, I think we've got some students or scouts here, just for education. We do this once a year. We, we elect a city council president for a term of one year. The council president fills in for the mayor when the mayor can't be here, so either reside over a meeting or it is a succession plating, would become the mayor if the mayor can't fulfill the duties. It is the only time, I believe, that we can take a secret vote, so we can take nominations and then we could take a secret vote. And at least the last few times we've done it, there's only been one nomination, so then I think we've just kind of done it by consent. But is there a motion to open nominations for council president?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Klug?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. The floor is open to nominations. Mr. Ringberg?
Mayor, I nominate Councilmember Jason Gaines as for council president.
Jason Gaines is nominated. Anybody else? Going once, going twice, silence. Is there a motion to close nominations for council president? Motion by Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Second by Councilman Mumgarth. Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Well, there's only one name standing, so do you want to do it in secret, or do you want, so?[1384.33][1384.33](Laughter). Is there a motion to approve Resolution R 22, Electing Councilman Gaines as Council President? Motion by Councilman Klug? Second by Councilman Fanslow? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Congratulations. Item M2, Resolution R 220207, A Resolution to Approve Mayoral Appointments. Technically, I don't think it has to be done every, every time. I think they stand until they're rescinded. But with a new council, I think it's a, a nice practice for us publicly to reaffirm all of the appointments, and that's what it is. All of the previous appointments are in the resolution. So is there a motion to approve Resolution R 220207? Motion by Councilman Sunday, second by Councilman Ingberg. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Congratulations to all of the professional staff that we have. Item M3, Resolution R 220213, A Resolution to Approve the Installation of Stop Signs on Beetle Street at the intersection with East 5th Street and on Monroe Street at the intersection with East 4th Street. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R 220213? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Ingberg? Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Glover.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. It's all the regular agenda items. I don't think any committees have met. Reminder, the Public Safety Committee does meet one more time in December. That will be the existing Public Service, I mean, Public Safety Committee, and you should have at your seat the assignments for next year. Anybody that had a preference for a committee, I was able to honor those. And then, just kind of a reminder, I mix them up a little bit. I try to make sure that every ward is represented on a committee, and then try to honor people's requests, and then also mix them up a little bit, so they, so we don't get the same ones every year, other than public safety, because of some of the work they're doing. I wanted that group to stay together so they can continue their work. So, thank you for your willingness to serve on the committee. So those will be effective January 1st. Couple of things from the last couple of weeks, not a lot. National League of Cities had a conference, the League of Municipalities has had a couple of conferences, been participating in those. And then I'm also on the Executive Board for the League of Municipalities, and so we had an executive board meeting and really starting to think about legislative-type items. And again, another good reminder of council, if there are things that you care about legislatively, make sure we're, we're aware of those, because the United Cities will actively work those down at the legislature. We're at the beginning of the biennium, the two-year cycle, and so it is a good time to be thinking about legislation, because we've got two years to work on that. So let Ms. Powers or myself know if there's something specifically of interest. Otherwise, during the legislative session, we do meet, the United Cities does meet every week to try to stay up what's, what's going on down in Lincoln. So again, if you've got any questions as the session's going on, let us know, and we can keep you updated on that. We tend to meet on Monday mornings. That'll start up in January. We've had a couple of ribbon cuttings, and then the Sarpy County Museum had an open house as well for the holidays, and I think that's most everything that's been going on. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Well, I forgot to ask for comments. Yeah, don't adjourn yet. Any council comments? Comments from the public? We've got some scouts with us. You gotta come up and introduce yourselves, and we'll wait until you do it, so you gotta come up. Or students as well. I don't think we have any students. I think we just have scouts with us. What troop you're with as well, and who the charter organization is?
My name is Amy. I'm SPL for Troop 461.
Welcome.
I'm Maria Wooton. I'm the troop guide for Troop 461. Gee.
I'm Andrea Hansel, and I'm in 461, and I'm a scout.
Welcome. Thanks for coming out.
Why are you here?
For a merit badge.
Which one?
Um, communications.